I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have adoption of the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Who's gonna do our invocation tonight? I heard that it was Deborah. I did.
I didn't know, but I'll sure do it.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Amen. If you would please remain standing while the East Hall High School ROTC color guard presents the colors and we have the honor.
(inaudible)
Forward, march!
Left, 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 right, left, 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 freeze it, march!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors! Right turn! March!
Left, 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 right, forward, march! Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 left.
Mr. Thompson, I believe we have some special recognitions tonight. Mr. Bales?
Yes, indeed. At this time, I want to ask Ms. Andrea Williamson-English, our Health Services Coordinator, to come forward, also with Joey Millwood, our Director of Student Services. We have a tremendous partnership now with MedLink and we have recognition that we'd like to put forward.
Good evening, distinguished board members. We are so excited to have some special folks come on up. I want to introduce you to Christine Blumberg. She is our Director of Marketing for MedLink, our partner with Hawks Health Center. They wanted to be a-
Please come up here.
And also Joshua Hale. So please, Joshua, come on up here, who is also the counselor at North Hall High School and my partner in crime with Hospital Homebound, who has been a contributor to this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Christine, 'cause I'm not gonna steal the thunder, and then Joey Millwood, our fine director. So Christine, come on up here.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Like she said, my name is Christine Blumberg and I'm the Director of Marketing at MedLink Georgia. And it is a privilege to be here tonight with you to present our scholarship to an outstanding Hall County senior, Robin Boggs. Robin has shown remarkable dedication to her academics, a deep commitment to serving others, and a strong passion for pursuing a career in healthcare. She stood out among a competitive pool of applicants. The selection process was not easy, but we were very excited to choose Robin based on her compassion, her determination, and her vision for the future. We are thrilled to invest in her potential and to support her continued education. This scholarship also represents the strength of the partnership between MedLink Georgia and the Hall County school system. And it's through the Hawks Health, school-based health center, that we work together to break down barriers to healthcare and to create a healthier learning environment for students. This scholarship is another reflection of our dedication to the educational success of the students here at Hall County. So congratulations to Robin. We are very proud of you and we can't wait to see what you do.
Jimmy, would you get a picture of them all together with that?
Joey, we have our certificate too, for Robin if you could get it for us.
Want one more thing to hold, Robin? It's a great partnership. We haven't even scratched the surface yet. Robin, you gonna tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
Sure.
That'd be great.
So, I congratulate you from North Hall. I want to go down there to get your nursing degree, but then you need to come back here and take care of us afterwards, okay?
I see somebody agrees.
Congratulations and thank you for the great partnership. Mr. Millwood, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Very proud, very proud of partnership. We have a very proud life.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Next up, I'm gonna invite Executive Director for Leadership Development, Mr. Dave Moody up. We have the cohort for 2024-2025 aspiring principals. I was joking with Dave right before we started saying, "I'm not even sure about aspiring," because five of the 10 people here are current principals. They have aspired already with regard to that. And so we were joking about maybe the next cohort might need to be Principal Pretension Academy with regard to that. But this is a powerhouse group when I look at this group, Dave, so I'm gonna let you take the lead.
I'd like to ask Jamie Moore to come up, 'cause he's my partner in this and want to thank the board. This is our fourth cohort for aspiring principals that we've just finished. It's a phenomenal process. One of the things I'm most proud of is that Hall County has made the commitment to having a formalized leadership development program to help people develop and grow. I'm really proud of this cohort because it's important to understand, this is above and beyond their work. They volunteer to come and learn and they certainly model a learning growth mindset without a doubt. They come after school in the evenings, we feed them dinner, and they grow together and learn together. I want to thank our Hall County district leaders who have been, really, all of you that have been part of this, because they have nights that they come over and teach them insides and outs, from the principal's perspective and from the district's perspectives. And Jamie's walked right alongside me in all this work. If you wanna share a few of your experience-
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I will, real quick, just what Dave said about them putting in a full day at work and then coming and spending four hours with us through the evening to work on their leadership just says so much about who they are and what their commitment to what you have put into wanting to prepare for that next generation of leaders. So we're so thankful to be able to work with them on everything that we've done.
Absolutely.
You wanna call him?
Yeah.
Okay. I need the mic.
All right. Lee Wilson.
And Lee is about to take over at Cherokee Bluff Middle School and she's still smiling.
Jennifer Gibson.
Jennifer's also smiling and is about to take over at East Hall High School. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Dana Walker.
A year into taking over at Chestnut Mountain, she doesn't have quite the smile that the other two have. Congratulations, Dana.
Kaitlyn Hansard.
Kaitlyn does a fantastic job at Davis Middle. How many years you been with Davis Middle, Kaitlyn?
Thirteen.
Wow.
Heather Davis.
Heather has taken over, first year, Friendship Elementary, not Friendship, Flower Branch Elementary, doing a great job. Came from Friendship Elementary. Congratulations, Heather.
All right. Beth Schmooes was not able to attend tonight, but congratulations to Beth. She's at Lanier Elementary School. Kristy House.
Kristy does a great job, taken over a year at Academy's of Discovery South Hall. Congratulations, Kristy, and thank you.
Roxy Miller.
Roxy moving over to Chickapi Woods from Spout Springs and gonna be our Associate Principal, and we're looking forward to great things as we move that school forward. Congratulations, Roxy.
John Hardison.
Mr. Creativity, I remember you at East Hall High School teaching in that incredible room that you two put together and is now playing a key role for one of the most impressive programs in the nation at Ivister Early College. Thank you, John.
And Robert Donaldson was not able to join us tonight as well, and he's at the virtual school.
Any questions from the board? I do want to thank you, as our friend John Maxwell says, "It all rises or falls on leadership." And you have invested in leadership. I would put our folks up against absolutely anybody, and I'm thankful for the way that you lead and take care of our 28,000 boys and girls. So once again, thank you, and thank you for supporting them, board. Don't put divots in the new grass out there now, so. One of my skills.
All right. I guess we're up to consent agenda, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, all in favor?
Would not be fitting if I didn't go out with one last field trip request for this board. So we have a whopping one student, one chaperone, that'll be traveling to Nashville in June to compete in a veterinary medicine competition from Flower Branch High School. Since it is in June, I do ask this board to give consideration for action tonight.
Make that in the form of a recommendation?
Second, all in favor?
Also in teaching and learning, Kevin, as you leave us this year, Suzanne, I think we've done some early tallying and we certainly look forward to what appears to be an incredibly robust and by far record number of graduates in our high school. Would you concur?
Yeah. That number is 2,072. We're still working.
That's unbelievable, and that doesn't include the summer graduates, so fantastic. The children, as they say on the continent of Africa with the musai, the children are well. Thank you. And our last recognition, which isn't up there, and that is, we had a little party for him and a mini roast, but Kevin, it has been an absolute honor for you to be part of this leadership team. You are gonna be missed dearly. We will move on, but as a dear brother and friend, all I can say is I pray and wish nothing but the best for you and your family. I still have your number. If you get that disconnected, I know three of your children's numbers and I do know how to find you. So would you join me in thanking Mr. Kevin Bales?
Just wanna say thanks for Deborah lifting me up in prayer. I'll continue to take all those I can get as I move into this next phase of life. But thank you to this board. It's been good to me. This district's been good to me. It's been a joy.
All right, Mr. Boykin, how about a financial report?
Yes, sir. Financial report for you, right exactly where we like to be this time of year. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
Looks like we're about a percent and a half under for expenditures, which is a great place to be. Four to five million over in revenues at this point. Any questions for Jonathan? If not, like to recommend that the financial statement be approved as presented.
I have a motion to approve the financial statement. Do I have a second? All in favor?
While we're on finances, Dr. Brown, again, it's gonna be interesting. We did get our first run of the preliminary budget before we started doing as much adjusting as we possibly could, but I've told you to expect some sticker shock. The initial's even a little worse than I thought. It appears that at this time, with the initial run, and it won't end up there, that we could be as much as $20 million under in terms of expenditures and revenues for next year. And again, we've got some work to do, but you can't take eight to 15 million dollars out of a local property tax digest and not think it's going to affect you. So just a little heads up there. Another thing that people sometimes forget, recall, so I don't have to answer 300 people tomorrow, why don't you get different insurance? School districts have no choice in terms of where they get their health insurance. We get the state merit program. We have to pay what we're told we have to pay by the state of Georgia. And Brad, tell us a little something about healthcare premiums for this district for our 3,700 employees.
Yes, sir. Currently, we pay $1,580 a month for classified employees, and that's per month, $1,760 per month for certified. And I'll give you just a little quick history. In 2023, I'll round these numbers off, but we, the district paid $54,709,561 that year.
I'm sure you misstated that. The district paid how much?
I wish, I wish it was $54.7 million in 2023. The one and a half percent budget we're under, we're gonna need it to cover the cost, 'cause this year, in 2025, we will pay an increase of about $13 million from two years ago to the tune of $67,503,000, okay? And what we are hearing from the state is that it will be going up again July of the 1. It has not been approved, but I, just so that as we prepare to move forward, it will go from $67,500,000 to approximately $76 million, $76 million, at the tune of $1,885 per employee. That's in addition to what the employees pay. We have no choice. The employees have a choice as to if they go with Anthem or United, and then what level of plan they pay. But that is the numbers that we're looking at ahead of us.
So please keep that in mind. That's one budget line item out of thousands, and when people say, "I can't believe your budget's going up $10 million this year," you can say, "Well, health insurance premiums alone are up $13 million." So I would say that that's fairly positive. But again, more information, and just wanted to bring you up on that process. Jonathan, are we getting a little closer to a proposed budget adoption schedule?
Yes, sir. So right now, the Appraisers and Commissioners Office think that we will have a final digest somewhere around July 12th is the current timeline that we have. Based on that, we believe that probably the last meeting in August would be the one, based on the timelines, that we'd be able to get a full approval with the hearings.
And be prepared for some more changes. I've been here 20 years. We've had to do a budget continuation resolution twice in those 20 years. This now looks like we'll do one for at least two months this year. And also keep in mind, there are legal requirements for how long people, it has to be advertised before the county can send out tax notices. So we may also be receiving tax notices as property owners later than normal, which means they'll be paid later than normal, which means an additional loss of interest income on a substantial amount of money for your Board of Education. But we will keep you up to date and we will be just fine. We'll make it work. Thank you. Matt, Custodial Services.
Yes, sir. This item's being brought forward from the work session last week. This is a proposed two and a half percent increase per the contract for the FY '26 school year.
Matt, if you could, we have approximately how many, 'cause sometimes we hear people, again, we went to this because it's more efficient. We get people whose business is cleaning. But approximately how many custodians do we have employed in the Hall County School District through our third party?
186.
186 to 200, that number goes between there. And Brad, you and I roll math teachers, and so when we take that amount of annual insurance coverage, we are saving in just in terms of insurance premiums on custodians, somewhere in the neighborhood of $4.5 million a year, give or take $50,000. So when people ask, "Why are we outsourcing?" Number one, cleaning buildings and cleaning floors is not our core business. People who do that every day for a living are the ones who should be doing it. Number two, they have very efficient models in terms of insurance and benefit plans, and so I would say we're probably saving somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two and a half million dollars a year by outsourcing that service. That's a very reasonable increase, two and a half percent. We certainly are getting the best production I believe we've had. Once again, I thank Jamie Moore. We have two individuals who do nothing but inspect our buildings every week and we get reports. And Matt and his team are in contact with those providers that week if a building is falling behind and getting dirty, and we've seen great results. High expectations, high support, and jobs get done. High expectations, high support, and children learn. So be glad to answer any questions, but there again, you see a $226,000 increase in the custodial services contract for next year. My recommendation will be that we accept that bid.
Do we have a motion to accept the bid? Second, all in favor?
And Matt, thank you for your great work with that. Eric Raddick, School Security. And when we say School Security, this is simply one piece of it. It's the front gate to remind the board what we're talking about here. This is not SROs, this is not technology, this is not hardening of targets and cameras. This is specifically, please tell the board.
Yes, sir. So each of our high schools has at least one guard at the main entrance, with North Hall being an exception, with two kind of main entrances they have two, and East Hall currently has two as well from the construction that took place. So EKG has been our provider. We're already seeing this year with Avery and I was walking alongside them, some improvement in their service. We had the two respondents out of eight that took the documents for the bid, and you can see the bid tab there before you sent out the information last week regarding the difference. So the big difference between the two is the hourly rate, which, based on, we have some kind of holiday hours that differ. Based on typical hour per year, it's about a $50,000 difference in the contract. Another one is Synergy doesn't have a local office and a little bit of concern about support and response time with that. So for your consideration, it's EKG to continue service for those security guard needs.
By the way, if you're wondering why high schools only, with hundreds of teenage drivers that take their vehicles to and from school, checking out throughout the day, it is absolutely imperative that we know who is coming on and off of those high school campuses. Several of us were talking this morning about how much that service has improved. Avery, we believe that your oversight is part of that, and we thank you for your work that you've done with that. But we'd be glad to answer any questions, and my recommendation will be that we go with EKG Security next year for our gate support services and security at our high schools.
Do we have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Raddick.
New funding request tonight for the board to consider, versus Oakwood Elementary School. This renovation's related to getting World Language to that location for two years while we're under construction. This includes a car rider, a temporary car rider line, and setting modular classroom building that's currently at World Language now, moving it to this location so that there's enough space. The other request for tonight is for World Language itself for the replacement elementary school.
Matt, remind us again, you had those bids, you tabulated them, you sent them to the board last week, but the actual construction cost, if my memory serves me right, which it usually doesn't, somewhere in the neighborhood of $36 million, is that correct?
Yes, sir, $36.2.
Contingencies, furnishings, technology, et cetera, with a million dollars, I believe, a contingency, which would be normal for a project that size, $40,200,000. We make those in the form of a request. The first will be bond funds. We're assuming the bond funds will be gone by the time, and for the entire construction, the one penny sales tax will be the new World Language Academy Elementary School. Make those in the form of a motion.
Do I have a motion for those? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I know they had a walk-through.
Mr. Sloan, if you're able to talk after your dental work, you wanna tell us how that went? I think your two daughters, your two daughters went there, did they not?
Yes. This side of my face is not working, but it was wonderful. And we had people from, I mean, literally 50 years ago, I mean, senior adults, I mean, like, older than me, you know? And it was, it was a great day. But I did want to ask Matt something, because I tried to explain some of this yesterday, 'cause you go through that school and, you know, it's still, you know, it's still set up for school right now. And I was trying to explain to him the number of years, how long you get out of a school year, and at what point you just get to the point you say, "We can't put Band-Aids on this any longer, and it just gotta be knocked down." Can you just speak to that just for a moment?
So for World Language, it's kind of a complex answer, because that's not one building. It's, I think it's about six or seven additions.
With the hot pods.
Right? So some of it is about the way that it circulates and does not work well. It's also not large enough. We have the eight classroom modular, just for fourth and fifth grade. And one of the biggest issues to me is the car rider situation. We're stacking up on Highway 53 every day. It's not safe, the situation that we have. So there's just a few things that come to mind right away, that cafeteria's undersized. I could go on. So, yep, everything. So there's no elevator. So just quite a few things about that building that are substandard.
Both my daughters did go through, and they did mention that this lunchroom used to be much bigger. That happens as you grow. That's what happened.
We actually took a wall out of two classrooms to get some additional seating space for that lunchroom. It is undersized by approximately 50% of what is projected from the State Department of Education. And if you had Principal Moody here tonight, I think she would tell you in terms of work orders on the infrastructure in that building, as Rafiki said in the movie The Lion King, it is time. It is time, and those children deserve a new space, but it's a great question.
Part of the building still has the terracotta pipes for the sewer line, and I think Aaron has mentioned it some in the past. There's no room in the ceiling to run any more network cabling or-
There's no more plumbing space.
So expanding the technology and making those rooms, you just can't do that with that type of building.
I had a gentleman talk to me at physical therapy today, a gentleman named Tommy Roberts. He went to the walk-through, and he said, "These folks that were there were saying, 'Yeah, I was here in 2000, so-and-so, so-and-so.'" He said, "I was there in 1964." But he was proud to be part of that recognition in the walk-through. But he was proud to be part of that recognition in the walk-through.
Dr. Swafford, Dr. Brown.
Yes, we have the personnel packet in front of you this evening, and as usual, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it. We actually have, we're ahead of the game. We're actually have fewer vacancies. Last week, I did a tally, and we had 57 vacancies, and I shared that in our meeting last week. And so, since then, you can see that we've processed nine recommendations. So, that gets us hope, and of course, we've got a few resignations that still continue to come in this time of year. So, but we should be hovering right around the 50 mark, and that's a really good place to be with this much time still left.
And Carla, another thing that's incredibly encouraging is I believe, which is also, I can't remember a time, maybe only 14 special education vacancies at this time?
Yes, we had 12 as of last Monday.
That's, that's, that's a good sign, so thank you.
Sure is.
Like to recommend the personnel packet be approved as presented.
All in favor? Time for citizens' input. Susan?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hope you're doing well. Yes, I cut my hair off. It's, I donated it. So, anyways. I wanted to talk to you about something I saw today. I think it came out this weekend. It was about the Beaufort City Schools. I don't know if you saw it or not. There was this big story on Fox 5 about it, and it was talking about it was the biggest or the best district in the U.S. And I read the article, and I started looking at the data, and I couldn't find the data. So, I went into the website, they said, it wasn't there. I went into the other website they talked about, and I saw a dashboard where you can manipulate the data. I never could get it to manipulate to put Beaufort first. I was just trying, just seeing. But just to let you know, yes, there, it's an amazing school down there, but you have to do and deal with what you have, and you have to make the best of it. And so, I've been coming to these. I've been trying to learn, and I want you to know that I'm still looking at the data. And one of the biggest things that I have seen, because I used to teach math a long time ago, but I did teach math for many years, and the biggest issue, people always complain, "I don't want to do word problems. Don't want to do word problems. I hate word problems." Do you know what's wrong with word problems? They can't read. It's all about reading. Math is a language. It has a noun, it has a verb, and it has a predicate. And when you learn how to read, you can do your math problems. That's where we need to concentrate. The reading scores that we're seeing out of Hall County right now are not good. If you look at the average, they're not good. I looked at it last summer. I'm going to look at it again this summer. I challenge you to focus on reading next year. I challenge you to look at not the averages, but at the individual teachers who are teaching our students. I bet at every school, you have one excellent reading teacher. Go find out what they're doing, and see if you can apply it to the other teachers. See if you can help them teach the other teachers. That's the most important thing that I can give to you right now, I say, look at reading, concentrate on reading, see what you can do. Don't throw money at it. Look at what you have. Look at the people who are doing it, and try to get that moving around all over your schools, and then your grades or your standardized tests, standardized tests are going to go up. Your math skills are going to go up. It's just going to be a huge thing. So, that's what I wanted to leave you with tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Just wanted to ask if you were aware of what percentage of our learners don't speak English as a first language, and you just did a very articulate job of reminding us that it's hard to take a standardized mathematics test today if you don't have command of the English language. Are you aware what percentage that is?
I know it's above a 50%.
It's actually 35% of our population. Are you aware what the average in Georgia is?
I do not know.
Yeah.
Okay. Where am I giving the 50%? I'm not sure.
Well, it's, I'm not sure, but we've got some schools that are approaching 99%. But it's, it's very difficult, and it's, and it's hard as a dad and as a member of this community to hear, "We're not doing so good." Do you know what the scores are when we take the English language learners out as compared to the state? In terms of reading?
I, I had it last year, but I don't have it anymore.
We actually outperform the state, and that's with an incredibly, parts of our county that are incredibly impoverished. So, I certainly appreciate what you're saying. We couldn't agree more that reading is the key to absolutely everything. And I also appreciated your comment that we take who we get. We love who we get, and we do a great job with them. So, so I appreciate it, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do, I do want to say that if, I like to not compare myself to the state. I like to compare myself to myself last year and make, make an improvement every year.
As do we. Growth is what it's about. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we did make a big investment in reading this year. That was one of our big expenditures in curriculum because we know how important that is, but thank you.
Good evening. So, I'm here tonight as a parent, community member, and someone who's both heartbroken and furious over what our children are facing in our schools. So, recently, I attended my son-in-law's graduation at Army Basic Combat Training. While I was there over a week, I had the opportunity to meet many of the 650 Native American individuals in Fort Sill, Oklahoma. Not once was I ever made to feel like I didn't belong. I'm of Monorican heritage. My ancestors immigrated from Spain to San Luis Cien, Florida. This country is the only one my family's ever known. Many families in Hall County have similar backgrounds, generations of immigrants that are citizens of the U.S. And yet somehow, their children are being told they don't belong right here in our own community. Let me be clear, today is not a day that I come to uplift dreamers and celebrate DECA. I'm angry. I recently learned that once again bullying is escalating in our schools. Children are telling each other to go back to where they came from. They're threatening Hispanic classmates, saying ICE will come to their house and take their parents away. Some of these children are so traumatized that they're afraid to speak out, or worse, they're harming themselves. They remain silent because if they report it, whether their parents are documented or not, they're being told that someone's going to come and take their parents away. It's not acceptable. What's even more acceptable is a complete failure of this board to respond with any real accountability. If you want to hand kids coping skills while doing nothing to stop the abuse, that's not protection. That's abandonment, and it's neglect. So, let's call it what it is. Some of you on this board care more about preserving your image than protecting children. You don't want to deal with the hard stuff brought to light because it's messy. It reflects poorly on leadership. Guess what? Silence is your silence. It's part of the abuse. If you're more concerned with sweeping the trauma under the rug than standing up for citizens and their students that are here in Hall County, then you no longer belong in this position. We don't need leadership that is comfortable with fear ruling our schools. We need leaders with courage, leaders who will defend every child, no matter where their family comes from, no matter what language they speak, no matter what fear-mongering threats they're facing from their classmates. I'm not going to stand by and let children be mentally terrorized in the schools. They're supposed to be safe there, and I'm not going to accept any more excuses from this board. Do better, step aside, or none of you belong at this table in front of me. Have a good evening.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?